July 20th, City Council Meeting, and ask those in the audience who'd like to join myself and the council in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item of special business this evening, Agenda Bill 7036, Kiwanis Day Proclamation. I am delighted to see so many Kiwanians here this evening, their representatives from three of the Kiwanis Clubs in our community, the Kiwanis Morning Club, the Kiwanis Club of Issaquah, and the Kiwanis Club of Providence Point. For those who may not know it, Kiwanis is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to changing the world, one child and one community at a time. And not only is that their model or vision, if you will, Kiwanis is celebrating this year their 100th anniversary of public service. And with that, I have a proclamation, and if the Lieutenant Governor and representatives from the three Kiwanis Clubs would please come forward, I will read the proclamation. Okay, so, whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest service organizations in the world, with more than 600,000 members of all ages and abilities in more than 80 nations, and whereas the members of our community Kiwanis Clubs are devoted to improving the world through local, national, and international efforts and programs, and whereas in addition to improving lives, our local Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intellectual and intercultural cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, and community service. Now therefore, I Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby claim July 20th, 2015, as Kiwanis Day, and the City of Issaquah, and I invite all of our citizens in joining me to recognize the hard work and success of our Kiwanis Clubs, and I further commend our local Kiwanians for being outstanding representatives of Issaquah and its community values. In witness whereof I hear and to set my hand in steel of the City of Issaquah this 20th day of July 2015, and with that signed copy of the proclamation, which I will present to our Lieutenant Governor. Again, thank you for your service.
Although Fred said he knew about it, this article in Family Circle was pretty impressive. They analyzed 4,500 cities, and they came up with the 10 best towns for families in the country. So that must be saying that you guys are doing something right.
Well, thank you, and Kiwanis is doing something right. Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Fred.
Audience comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so this evening. When recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments or other information you would like to share with the council, please provide it to our city clerk. And with that, I would again say that citizens' comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during meetings. And with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Yes, first is Tina.
I would like to thank you for your time, to you allowed us to hear our voice. My name is Tina Conforti, and I am a resident of Issaquah, 1220 Okwood Place, Northwest Issaquah, Washington. The reason I'm here back today is because we would like to have little actions going on in responding on the accident that happened on June 15, where the little boy was killed right down the corner on Newport Way and Oak Crest Drive. We are very interested here from the City Council, and we'd like to, if it's possible, not take it so long as possible, and the reason why it is, because we don't want a mortal life to give in an incident like it happened on June 15. Another little boy, a little boy was killed and didn't get a chance to leave, you only had a chance to leave for four years. As a mother and grandmother, I feel very sad about it, and I urge the City Council and the City of Issaquah to take action and lower the speed limit, and also make better wearing and signing, the crosswalk signing. It's, the lights are not working when it's so much shade covering up the sun power. So we would like very much if you can make this adjustment and make it safer for the neighborhood, make it safer for houses to exit and to get in in our residence area. And I don't take all your time, but please, let's do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mary Lynch.
The mouse went where? Okay. I would like to make sure that this presentation here is entered into the record, both the slides, the PowerPoint, and the verbal presentation. Just a minute, I just got to get this up full screen. Can somebody help me bring this up full screen? I'm not familiar with this computer. And I would hope this doesn't cut into my time.
No, we will not cut into your time, Mary.
Okay, the right area, okay. My name is Mary Lynch. I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Issaquah, Washington, have been there since 1986. I want to continue where I left off on July 6th. First slide, 25 miles to Newport on the west entrance. My first question is, what city review, what city review was done for the last two cars that were submitted by Summerhill by Mr. Hart Sugarman? Second question is, community stakeholders, daily users of the road, taxpaying citizens, and even yes, some of us are professionals trained in traffic and safety, have not been involved in the city's process to review and those decisions made with these past cars. Third, how did the city act, or make the decision to act, since no knowledge that we have that the city has ever done a comprehensive study of accidents along this stretch, has never completed traffic flow for local versus through traffic, has never done a professional current conditions or redesign study for our neighborhood street? What engineering or public safety study supports a 40 mile an hour speed limit along this neighborhood arterial? Let me go here. Case in point, one that goes into our arterial, just like ours, is 25 miles an hour. Do you have any idea the number of stakeholders in our area that over the years have been rear-ended and by attempting to turn into their respective streets? I know of two in the last month that have been rear-ended, besides the other accident that happened on the 26th. One of my former neighbors has, was hit twice, two separate times totaling her car, twice. We learned last month in this meeting that Mr. Schertz's serious accident, where he and his wife incurred their life-altering injuries, and by some higher power, their grandchildren got missed being seriously hurt or killed the hour before. Have any of you been out to the entrance since he was here talking to look at the design? Not only does he have to fear for his life when he approaches his residence because of the 40 mile an hour speed limit, curves and hills, reducing sightline, but he also has to worry about exiting his speed. Let me go back one. Whoops, I put this in the wrong order. One got left out, all right. I had one just before, seconds before, where you couldn't see that car, and that's what happened on the day I was there. This is exiting his place. Have you looked to the entrance on Lake Mott Orchards just over a month ago, where there was the rear ender, when someone was attempting to turn in there? Where is the turn lane to get into there? Where is the notice that there's an entrance there? And I'm sure this is not the first accident that's happened there at Lake Mott Orchard. And oh yes, has any of you seen Zari, who has his motorized red cart that goes up and down the pathway along into New, or into Issaquah, and also has to cross that street to get onto a bus to go into Bellevue? None of these four residential entrances along this western entrance are built to city code. Crosswalks. What studies did you do to put the three crosswalks that we have and were called out in the car? All located on blind curves, 40 mile an hour speed limits. There's that one. Sorry, got out of order. This was taken a couple days after the accident, Notice 49. That was very typical on that day when I took pictures. Also noticed no brake lights, and I was standing there taking pictures. I would address looking at the sightline, possible, or braking distance required, once you know that there's somebody in the crosswalk. 300 feet at 50 miles an hour is what it takes to be able to stop in time to hit somebody. Look at the percentages of lives that can be saved if the speed limit is lowered.
One minute.
I would also ask, what study was done to put our flashing light in there? Here on Front Street, where it's 20 and 25, you have the HAWK system that is in and part of the Rock and Roll Program of the Sustainability Report that came out, in which it identified that our stretch of street, the stakeholders wanted and needed improvements, none was in their report either. I also attended a Issaquah meeting last week, talking about the need for two more staff people in development, and was told because of the increase in development, up by 20% to 30%, but traffic engineers weren't needed at the time, that the current staff is handling those. Development engineers, what traffic training do they have? What public safety do they have? They're already overloaded, but they're doing all the existing review of current and existing development.
30 seconds.
So I put it first is, please put safety first. Fund the staff required in traffic and your police to make sure that we, our needs are met first above, through traffic and developers. And last is a public service, parents with kindergartners and people that haven't been through it, please come to the kindergarten enroll, you have to enroll, the kindergarten transportation training that is going to be done in August, and learn about bus safety, how to get your children on and off the bus. Please come here versus trying to do it at the first day of school. It's much safer, it's in a safe environment, you'll meet your drivers, you'll meet the rules. So please enroll if you haven't done already. Public, please enroll, come see what is all about school buses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Connie Marsh.
Hey, I'm Connie Marsh, and I have a store at 1175 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Suite B 11, and also live in Issaquah. So the whole public safety meeting is an opportunity. Coming right out of your goal-setting session, y'all said you wanted a lot of citizen engagement, and so here we go. Prime opportunity, you have a large number of people who are interested in making their neighborhoods, roads, lives safer. Yet, when it goes online, there's no contact information for anyone to talk to about what is happening at the meeting. Then the agenda comes out, and the agenda says introduction, meeting, adjournment. So I hunted down a staff person who, my understanding is that Emily Moon is the staff contact person for this, and I got the agenda format out, and I was upset because it is basically feeding the citizens into the typical open house scenario, which tends to divide everyone up into small pockets, and the people in the community don't get to hear each other, and the council doesn't get to hear each other, and not everyone gets to hear the answers to all the good questions that all of the other people in the public ask. And if you are actually trying to engage your community, you do need to let the community bond. They need to hear each other, they need to hear all their other concerns, they need to agree and disagree, and understand what's happening in a variety of neighborhoods, so that we can become a community rather than three people splintered in five stations around the room. This also needs to be televised, so that the rest of the community that cannot come can see that the city is genuinely interested in creating a community effort to make our town safe as a priority. I did not see that we were going to be televising this as we were going to be splitting it into small groups, which is incredibly difficult to televise. So here's a great opportunity to follow on these goals that everyone voted for just like weeks ago, and so I was disappointed, and of course, when I get disappointed, I aim for change. So what I would like to see is, I would like to see a meeting where the community and the council and the staff can hear what everyone has to say, and everyone can hear what staff has to say back, and I would like it to be televised, so that everyone who can't come and who is interested can also see. Second, I wanted to talk about the policy of creek protection. In our code, which we improved, we did get increased buffers, but oddly, we don't have a mechanism to improve the actual creeks. So what is resulting is, we're getting great buffers on creeks that are in ditches, and this is not appropriate. We don't need great buffers, we need great habitat, we need great streams, we need beautiful amenities for the people who want to move to the town, and this fight fits exactly within our environmental ethic, yet it is being, I don't know that it's being ignored, it is just not being supported. Tibbetts Creek is a good example of a creek that is going to be improved. Confluence Park, they're ripping out the sides, and we're improving Confluence Park. I think there needs to be a policy direction that indicates that the creeks themselves need to be improved along with a buffer when they are being impacted by development. So I would ask for that policy improvement. I think that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not signed up to speak that would like to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak this evening who has not signed up? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak? Seeing none then, audience comments are closed, and we will move to committee reports. I would note at this time that Councilmember Milligan is excused this evening, and we'll begin with Councilmember Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board did not, is not going to meet in August. Their next meeting will be September 3rd, and the agenda has not been set yet, it's at 10:00 AM in their offices down on Western Avenue in Seattle. Manden Shore did not meet in July, and there has been no date yet set for the August meeting. I'll have more information by our August meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Services and Safety met on Tuesday, July 14th. We had a very full agenda, but we got through it, and everybody stayed in good spirits. So there are a number of items that will be, if the consent agenda is passed today, they're on the consent agenda. There's a couple that are for later. We do have Agenda Bill 7029, DSD 2015 Staffing Request is on regular business this evening, and we also, I'll have my fellow councilmembers note that Agenda Bill 7027 close out of council goals. We bifurcated that and closed out, or moved forward, and the bill that's on consent agenda tonight closes out the Rainier Trail Goal, but not the Drug-Free Community Goal. Next, I want to report briefly on the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, and just report back that on the eve of our pick meeting, a striker was added at the county level that accomplished really the issues that this council referred back. For one, they decreased the percentage from 6% to 5% that we go to evaluation and data collection. Secondly, they issued, they put forward a number of dates for specific plans to flesh out what would be, what the game plan going forward would be if the Best Starts for Kids levy moves forward and passes, including composition of advisory boards by December 1st, 2015, transmitted implementation plan for the Youth and Family Homelessness Prevention Plan by February 1st, 2016, and then implementation plan to the rest of the funds by June 1st, 2016, and that the council specifically calls out cities for inclusion in the Oversight Committee and requires that the stakeholders represent geographic diversity. So the core, we had, we had a number of issues that we communicated back to the county, but these really reflect the core issues, and hopefully it does not come as a surprise that as a result of all these, the pick voted unanimously to support putting this issue before the voters. Then next, the Growth Management Policy Council meets this Wednesday, July 22nd, at 4:00 PM in PSRC Chambers, and as I've mentioned before, climate change will be on the agenda. The Regional Law and Social Justice Committee meets Thursday, July 30th, in the Bertha Knight Landis Room. The King County Emergency Management Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, July 14th, at the Renton, the Emergency Management Center for the County that's located in Renton, which has a long acronym that I don't know the name for. And it was a
You're very great, Tola.
And I won't go through the details of that. The State Emergency Management Council met on Thursday, July 9th. We received a lot of information. One of the things that may, we may want to look at as a city is getting a session on Cascadia Rising. There's a lot of interest in the public right now, particularly as a result of an article that came out in The New Yorker last month regarding the Cascadia Subduction Fault. For people at home who don't know, Issaquah is actually an integral part of Cascadia Rising. It was nice at the EMAC to hear, they called us out as a representative of a city that's very closely engaged in Cascadia Rising. This is a two-year activity across municipal, county, state, multi-state, federal levels to prepare for the possibility of a large-scale subduction fault earthquake and how the region would respond. So hopefully, perhaps we'll find out more about that, we could, we could get a presentation on that later. And we also talked about the challenging fire conditions that exist right now in western Washington, and efforts that are being made to prepare for fires that are occurring, including the Wenatchee Wilderness Urban Interface Fire that occurred a couple weeks ago that actually got into the city of Wenatchee. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee will meet this Thursday at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. On our agenda is an informational item on transportation projects, specifically with respect to grant funding opportunities for projects around the city. We will also anticipate action on Agenda Bill 6906, Cable Television Commission Recommendations, action on Agenda Bill 7012, 2015 Regional Aerial Imagery Funding Agreement, action on Agenda Bill 7025, Amendment to the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery Interlocal Agreement, and Agenda Bill 6844, Notice of Intent to Assume City of Bellevue Sewer and Water Utility Within South Cove and Greenwood Point. Lastly, there's an informational item concerning 2016 potential complete streets projects. The next meeting after that is going to be scheduled for Wednesday, August 5th. That is a change from our normal date that we would meet in the month of August, and that will be at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, August 5th. It's currently scheduled in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. The location may be subject to change over the next few weeks, currently something I'm working on, and that agenda is likely to include a discussion topic by the committee with respect to the Newport Way Corridor from State Route 900 to Lake Mott Boulevard, and that would be on the August 5th Infrastructure Committee Agenda, not the one this Thursday. Lastly, the Eastside Transportation Partnership did meet in the month of July, but unfortunately, I was out of town, so Councilmember Van Ness chaired that meeting, but it's my understanding there was a presentation on the 405 Corridor and the City of Bellevue on its upcoming road projects. There is going to be an August ETP meeting. It is not taking the month off, as we have continued planning for the October Symposium on Technology and Transportation, which will be one of the topics on that agenda, and I've got about three weeks to come up with the rest of the topics for that agenda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Wyber 8 Salmon Recovery Council this week. The first thing we talked about was getting a legislative update in regards to funding from the state legislature. We received funding for five different projects. The first is to continue to support the Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Grant Program. So it's $30 million for base grant funding to the watershed. There was support for $5,005 million, excuse me, for King County Council Public Utility Cedar River Corridor Plant Implementation Proposal. Also received support for the salmon, state salmon recovery capital funding to match federal dollars that we have received in continuing the coastal salmon recovery funding. Supported, support fully funding the state's contribution to salmon recovery. This was mostly operational dollars. And also supported Puget Sound's partnership operational dollars in regards to the next phase of the Chinook Monitoring Adaptive Management Program. We also did approve the next ILA that will take us from 2016 to 2025, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met on July 9th, and a brief recap of what was on the agenda and what occurred there. The board approved executing an agreement with Mercer Group. Mercer Group is a consultant that will be heading the search for a new fire chief, and that's going to start very quickly right out of the gates here in this month. One of the items on the agenda was the administer, the topic is administrative pay. There, as you all know, there's several high-level administrators who are leaving by January of next year, and one of the discussions that we had at the board level was whether to look at the administrative pay to ensure that as we replace those, those senior folks, that the pay is, we're ensured that it's appropriate, and so that we attract fine candidates. And so that topic will be looked at by the Finance Committee tomorrow, that I'll talk about in a minute. The, an agenda bill is working its way back to the board regarding the administrative support that Eastside Fire provides to its partners, and the, that agenda bill is going to be looking at how perhaps to track the hours that Eastside Fire that Eastside Fire is spending, supporting its partners to make sure that the contributions that District 10 is making right now annually is fair. It's really an audit issue and an equity issue. There was, there were some comments in the, by some members of the partners that concerned that it could create sort of a negative relationship issue to be tracking what Eastside Fire does for the partners because it looked, not tracking was more of a relationship-building type of an issue. But that Agenda Bill will be coming back to the board. The board adopted a media policy that was directed at the board so that the board members will let the agency know and each other know when they were talking or had been talking to the media. And that really was basically identical to the City of Issaquah's policy. The new contracts for firefighters and officers and battalion chiefs were approved by the board. And those are three-year contracts. Is that right?
Three years plus one plus one.
Okay. Three years plus one plus one.
And they were approved by District 10, which is the employer of record. Last, those are signed and executed.
Thank you for that clarification. We had a discussion about the effect of the Clohania Annexation on District 10 and Samamish. And that was a really interesting discussion because Samamish brought forward some maps of potential annexation areas and really the effect on the whole agency. It was very, very interesting. Tomorrow, the Eastside Fire Finance Committee meets, and we will be, as I mentioned, discussing the administrative pay, possible review, and also primarily looking at next year's proposed budget. And that committee meeting is tomorrow morning, or tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM at the headquarters, 175 Newport Way Northwest. There also is a regional, an RFA, Regional Fire Authority Planning, Regional Fire Authority Planning Meeting that is happening at 4:00 PM at the same location on July 30th. And also, as you all know, District 10 and 38 are looking at forming a Regional Fire Authority. And so this is another one of their planning meetings. And one of the interesting topics that they're taking up is naming the RFA, and it's apparently more difficult than it sounds. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Wintersheim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next meeting of the Eastside Human Services Forum Board is September 16th. No agenda is yet set. The next meeting of the Joint Recommendations Committee for Community Development Block Grants is set for Thursday, September 24th, and no agenda has yet been set. And on the news front, I did get appointed to the King County Conservation Districts, the King Conservation Districts Regional Food System Grants Initiative Review Team. So they'll be meeting sometime in September as well. I'll have lots of reports early October for you.
Congratulations.
On the Regional Food System Grants Initiative Review Team.
Thank you. There will not be an executive session held this evening. Council President Wintersheim and Councilmember Goodman and I had the pleasure of participating in a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Lake Samamish State Park for their new bathhouse at Sunset Beach, which was well-attended by our Washington State legislators, who also assisted in cutting the ribbon. That was on July the 7th. On July the 8th, I had the pleasure to be a part of the Police Department's Badge Transition Ceremony where the Issaquah Police Department received new badges, which were designed in-house and reflect a representation of City Hall and the eagle out front. They're quite attractive. Our Chief of Police is here this evening, wearing the new badge. Family members and our police officers and staff were present, and they all took a reaffirmation oath and reaffirmed their commitment to serve our community. It was a nice family affair, and they rededicated themselves to keeping our community safe. I attended the July 9th Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board Meeting. Of interest was a recommendation to the Executive Committee that the East Link Rail Extension Project status in the Transportation 2040 Plan be changed from candidate to approved. And what that does, it reflects the part that, the fact that the project has been baseline and is fully funded for completion. And that link light rail extension is scheduled to be completed in 2023. On July 16th, I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Finance and Management Committee Meeting where CWA auditors presented Cascade's 2014 audited financial statements and a clean audit without any problems. So that is good news. With that, that concludes the mayor's report. I would ask, as we move to the consent calendar, if accounts payable and payroll have been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Great. I would then ask if any council member desires to remove any item on the consent calendar down to regular business. Seeing none, then, I would ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record, please.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by a single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of account payables and payroll dated July 20th. Item B is Agenda Bill 7013, Ecology Local Source Control Program Grant, seeks grant acceptance and authorization to enter into an agreement. Item C is Agenda Bill 7027, Closeout of Council Goals Safe Drug-Free Community and Rainier Trail, seeks approval to close out the Rainier Trail goal. And item D is Agenda Bill 7034, Commercial Fueling Card System, seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Council President Wintersheim.
May I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 7029, Development Services Department 2015 Staffing Request, and that is coming back from Services and Safety. And I believe we have a presentation to kick things off.
Yeah.
For the city council's benefit, this will be the last time you see Charlie Bush standing in front of the camera, presenting a staff report. He has accepted a position as city manager in, and what was the name of that town?
Squim.
Squim.
Takes some practice.
And so, Charlie, this is your last opportunity.
Thank you. No pressure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Here to talk tonight about Agenda Bill 7029. And I just wanted to highlight a few things in here that maybe weren't as clear as we would have liked them to have been. So we are seeing uptick in development, particularly on the front end of the development process. So brand-new projects that have come to the forefront in just this year that weren't in our forecast when we did it last year. And it's particularly on the planning and engineering side, where forecasting an additional $700,000 in unanticipated revenue this fall in those areas. And then looking at our 2016 forecast that we're going to use as the foundation to the budget for next year's revenues in our area, we're seeing that come down a bit, but being sustained enough to support what we're recommending this evening. And what we're recommending are four different investments on behalf of the city. The first two, the new Engineer Tech 1 and the new Assistant Planner, those are both ongoing expenditures, ongoing positions. The first one titles, or totals, $80,000 fully loaded. The second one, $95,000 fully loaded. So if you want to think into 2016, that's $175,000 ongoing investment. The last two, $32,000 and $30,000 for extending a Building Inspector 1 position and borrowing some Public Works Operations staff. And I can explain those in more detail if necessary. But those are one-time, those are short-term investments that are frankly just needed right now. They may continue if we see development uptick again next year, but we would come back to you at that time to have that discussion. There is a graph that's included on page 2 of 2 in your Agenda Bill. It's towards the back, it's the very last graph, and it shows a projection. It basically shows our projected in 2015, $3.4 million in revenues. That's what's built into the budget, and we're projecting at this point to finish at almost $4.2 million. And then when you look at next year's forecast, it's 3.7. With these investments totaling $175,000, what we really focused on was the difference between the 3.4 and the 3.7. There's a margin there, and that's where we're looking at, the ongoing investment. We recognize that should circumstances change in forecasts, I learned one thing in grad school, the forecasts are always wrong, it's only a question of what the margin is. So we're getting better and better at this, but should things change, we'll certainly be back. We've got some alternatives and options that we can exercise to make sure that we stay within budget. One last comment, and that is the Engineering Tech 1 and the Assistant Planner position. These are both more entry-level positions that aren't represented in the department right now. And what we really need to do is optimize our workflow through our Kaizen efforts and other things. We've identified the need to have certain types of positions filled that weren't represented as a result of the reorganization. And so this is an opportunity to both address workload as well as address work efficiency within our department. So that's why we settled on those two positions as the recommendation. That's my report.
Thank you. As I noted, this is coming back from Services and Safety. Councilmember Marts.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I authorize the new, I move to authorize the new positions of Engineer Tech 1 and Assistant Planner, and further authorize the temporary positions of Building Inspector 1 and Public Works Operations Staff as described in Agenda Bill 7029.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? We'll start with Council President Wintersheim.
Thank you. I don't know if it was discussed in committee, so maybe you can answer it. If not, maybe Charlie. So in the bill, the title is Engineering Tech 1. I think you just said that that was a new position. So if I look at the current 2015 position chart, there is no Tech 1, there's just a Senior Engineering Tech. So it's create, it's not, it's creating an all-new position.
It's creating an all-new position, that's correct, within the city.
So, okay, so.
Like a new classification and an all-new position within our department.
So like, so I would then expect out of this, when we get our budget for 2016, there'll be an additional line in there.
Correct.
It'll say something like Engineering Tech 1.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And is there, and I assume also, is there going to be any net FTE change with this, that Engineering Tech or any of the other positions at all?
Well, there will be a net FTE change, at least within our department. I can't speak to the 2016 budget yet.
Oh, no, yeah, just these positions.
But certainly, yeah, this would be a plus two in this case, two additional FTEs for Development Services, ongoing, for those two positions.
And, and so, and the four posi- so, meaning the other positions are, there's going to be some type of transfer or what's going on with those two other positions?
So it's undetermined, the Extend the Building Inspector 1 position, that is a temporary agreement, it's a limited-term agreement we've had with Polygon, went through last year, and it continues into this year. We're anticipating that to come to an end. We're not exactly sure when that's going to occur. So the money we're asking for here would simply make sure that that goes through the end of the year, assuming that they were to cancel that agreement sooner than later. There is the possibility we may ask for that position in the 2016 budget to be extended even further. So it's a little bit hard for me right now to answer your question exactly in terms of where we land, but as of this Agenda Bill, that position would go away at the end of the year. So you would see a net one, actually, negative one on that position and then two on the others. And then the last line item is really assistance from existing staff. It's for overtime and backfill for Public Works Operations Staff to come in and assist our site work inspectors with doing some expert site work inspections that are needed for things like waterline connections.
So there's no FTE change with that last position as well?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So it's four positions, extending one, existing one through the end of the year, creating a new one, which is really just allowing this last bit of services. So it's, but it's really just two net FTEs with this action tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. We did talk in Services about the impacts and benefits that the additional staff would have on DSD. And the one area that stood out, and we spent a few minutes on in committee, was the question of what the impact on PWE would be as well. Because I think there was a significant concern that as we add more DSD staff and allow further development and the ease of further development, we are still not catching up with our infrastructure needs, especially in the area of traffic congestion. And it's my understanding from some subsequent information that there are benefits tangentially perhaps to PWE from these added positions. You know, I look at Table 3, which is the permits per month, and what stands out is striking to me is that we've gone from 2011 to now, almost double the amount of construction permits per month on average. And that is, in my opinion, unbelievably significant and rapid and concerning in many ways because, as I've said before, I don't believe that the rapidity of growth in this city is sustainable without catching up on our infrastructure. And I am concerned as I look around this town and see development after development after development popping up like popcorn, and yet the roadways in front of those developments, other than frontage improvements or other things required perhaps under SEPA, are still remaining the same. And congestion only continues to get worse and worse. And we spent many months during our concurrency discussions talking about the already-existing backlog of infrastructure projects and the fact that we have so far to go before we can catch up and achieve the level of service that our citizens expect. And when I see over 200 permits per month and what that means for the future of this city, you know, I said it before, I'm not anti-growth, but it's the pace of growth that significantly concerns me. And we're going to be playing catch-up for quite some time. So there's a part of me that believes perhaps if we didn't add more DSD staff, somehow it could slow that down. But unfortunately, I think all it would accomplish not to approve this is it would just put more work on our existing city staff and structure, and it's not going to change, per se, the amount of development that's coming into the city. So I figure, why make it harder on our city staff that's burdened? And if there will be a benefit to PWE out of this, then that's good too. But I would call again, as I did in committee, for really strong consideration and a look in next year's budget of making sure we have more infrastructure-related staff in the areas, especially of traffic congestion. I know we're looking at utility staff in PWE, and that's important too, but we've got to catch up on that pace of infrastructure the more this popcorn development continues to proliferate around the city. And I don't like it, but that's the direction that the city's been heading.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Charlie, you said with regard to extending the Building Inspector 1, you referenced an agreement with Polygon?
Yes.
Can you address that? I don't know what that, what you're talking about.
So we've, the city historically has, with very large developments or with developers that have a series of significant developments, worked with them to look at having them pay for the cost of an inspector to be dedicated to their projects. They have the ability to do that. And we've done that with Polygon, we did it with Swedish Hospital, we've done it with a few projects over time. Those agreements have an expiration. Sometimes they get extended, the one with Polygon did, but also can be canceled at any time. And Polygon's work is starting to wind down on some of their existing projects where that inspector would be needed. So we're anticipating that that position may be canceled, yet we still have significant volume of other development, and so we're desiring to keep that going.
So Polygon would be paying for that inspector?
Polygon has been paying for that inspector up until now. We're anticipating they would not be paying for that inspector potentially that's starting this fall. And so we're trying to keep that position fully funded through the end of the year so we can address other work that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or discussion?
Charlie.
Just, I just want to say on camera, I want to thank Charlie Bush for his service to the city. I didn't mention it in my remarks earlier, but it has been a pleasure working with Charlie and the outstanding work he's done in the Executive Office and with DSD. And it's been a pleasure having you here, Charlie, and I wish you the best in Squim. Wonderful town.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the council as well. It's been a pleasure working with all of you, and I will certainly miss that. But don't be strangers, I'll see you at AWC and other places.
Okay. Councilmember Polly.
I didn't realize you were jumping right to saying goodbye to Charlie. I actually wanted to know about the, one comment about the Agenda Bill, and it's just that I think your explanations tonight were very clear and helpful, but I also appreciate the effort you guys put in in coming up with the creative solution and the. and looking at many different ways to fill these positions. So it looks like you put a lot of effort into it and that's, that's a very good solution.
Thank you. If you saw the whiteboard in my office a few weeks ago, it was scary.
I can imagine.
Yeah.
And good luck in Squim. We'll miss you and you're lucky.
Council President Wintersheim.
Does any, does everybody who's want to speak have a chance the first time? Okay, I'll defer my comments until others have all had a chance to speak for the first time.
I, I too would like to wish you well in Squim. I think you're going to get tired of all that sunshine. I think that pretty quickly, you're going to realize how much better you had it when it rained about 100% more than it does in Squim. So, but good luck. You might like it.
Fortunately, I can always drive over to Forks.
Charlie, before we say goodbye, actually, I do want to go back to the agenda bill. And again, I was re-comparing the positions with the current authorized position chart. And so in the current budget, there, so we have the title of Associate Planner. And this one, is there any difference between this Associate Planner and this one now labeled Assistant Planner?
There is. Assistant Planner is, is a lower-level classification than Associate Planner. And the vision for this position of Assistant Planner is to have them work a lot of the count, the front counter that we have in the permit center. What typically has been happening is our Associate Planners and our Senior Planners have been working away at projects in the back office and they're, they're in a good flow. And then they get a phone call and they've got to run up front and it disrupts their workflow and they may spend 30 minutes up there and then they get back to whatever they were doing. And so we're, we're trying to break that up and allow them to focus a little bit more.
Okay. And so, and then there's a, there's a, a comment in the budget on page 24 of last, of this year's budget. And there is, in the budget snapshot, there, the, under the general fund area, the fourth sub-paragraph says, includes holding the Senior Planner and Associate Planner positions vacant due to the corresponding decrease in revenue resulting in a savings of $225,000 annually. So when we approved the budget, we were actually had approved positions, but we're holding them vacant, we're not filling them due to the lack of work. So what's happened? I mean, so I, I assume those positions have both been filled?
So, no, they, they haven't. So we, when we went through the budget process last year, a couple of things happened. One, we actually were lower than our forecast last year during the actual budget year. And so we had to make some adjustments as a result of that. And then going into this year, our forecast was actually showing a downturn on the front side with both current planning and engineering, the same areas that are now up. So we continue to refine our forecast model here. But what we did in response to what we saw when we were putting the budget together last year was to make sure that we were fiscally responsible and that we did not fill positions that were currently vacant that would have caused additional expenses to the city in areas where we did not see the workload present. So we did not fill those, we did not fund those in the budget. So those positions exist in the position log, but they actually don't have any money attached to them at this point. And at this point, rather than a Senior Planner or an Associate Planner, our real need is an Assistant Planner, somebody who can help us out at the front counter in particular.
Okay. And so just one kind of, because we're talking about positions and I'm deliberately bringing it up in the context of a larger budget. Also, the budget does include an appendix where it has the actual range of compensation, at least salary compensation. And I, and I would think, just as a matter of practice going forward, we have opportunities if you're going to, out of kind of budget cycle, bring forward position requests, authorizations, that the same way, the same amount of, well, Charlie, you can take this great practice to Squim, they'll probably appreciate it there as well. The same way it's reported and we approve all positions in the budget, the same information. Because there is, there is that appendix that has the full position chart in it and it has the high and low ranges for salary. And I, and we don't have that information here. You've provided it. I don't know if it's at the low end or the high end. You're going to hire in somebody in the middle and there's going to be some steps within that position that they, you know, you know, could earn under the employment. But I'd hope to, I'm sure we'll see that level of detail when we see the full budget request for 2016.
Yep.
Actually, you'll see that earlier. You'll see that earlier because if you approve this, this will require a formal amendment to this year's budget to add that position and include the ranges, the Assistant Planner.
Fantastic.
Yeah. So you will see that this year and next year if it's included.
Thank you, Wayne.
I should have mentioned, Diane is currently processing that budget amendment, so that's coming your way very soon.
Okay.
Other questions or discussion before we act? All those then in favor of authorizing the new positions of Engineer Tech 1 and Assistant Planner and further authorize the temporary positions of Building Inspector 1 and Public Works operations staff as described in Agenda Bill 7029, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to good of the order, Council President Wintersheim.
Yeah, I remind my colleagues on the council, we are meeting tomorrow at 7:00. And we're actually meeting here. So this is where we'll meet first. There will be a little bit of a presentation. And then just be wearing your walking shoes because we'll leave from there, from here and, and head out for our little tour. So just in case you weren't sure where we were starting, we're actually meeting here at 7:00.
And we will end here. Okay, Mary Lou.
Just an item from the Friends Visca Salmon Hattery. I mean, I go sit on the board for that and they are doing a presentation, or hosting a presentation Wednesday night at Confluence Park. Our Water Resources Engineer, Carrie Rettland, is going to be doing her presentation. So I invite you all to join if you have time. It'll be a beautiful night. She'll be very good presentation.
Anything else for good of the order? Seeing none, then we are adjourned.